We call environmental meeting, uh, general, or excuse me, planning meeting, envi- planning environmental commission meeting to order. It is Tuesday, September the 16th. The time is 7:05. May we have one of our distinguished commissioners lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Yes, item number three, may we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Langley, here. Commissioner Sherman?
Here.
Commissioner Khan?
Yeah.
Vice Chair Wrightshire?
Here.
And Chair Henderson?
Present. Item number four, approval of minutes from our March 19th meeting. Do we have a motion?
I say we approve the meeting of March 19, 2024, 2403, 19 PCM, iron.
We have a second? I'll second. Roll call, please.
Question, can we vote when we were, what's the?
You abstained on that, but you can vote on the minutes because you're voting it's correct that you abstained on the minutes. You're just voting that the minutes are a correct reflection of what happened.
Vice Chair Wrightshire?
Yes.
Chair Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sherman?
Yes.
Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
And Commissioner Langley?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, item four B, approval of minutes from our April 2nd meeting. And I will, I will approve, adopt the motion to approve, yes.
I second the motion to approve.
Roll call, please.
Chair Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Langley?
Yes.
Commissioner Khan? Commissioner Sherman?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Sher.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Item number five, oral communications.
So this is the time where the public may speak to the planning commission for items not on this agenda. Keep in mind that the items to be discussed are for items not on this agenda. At this time, the planning staff has not received any comments for public comment for oral communications.
Thank you. I have one to add. The property again on Elsie Gundo, just, what is it? Just right across street from McDonald's. We, they did put up a barrier, since the barrier is falling down. And as my neighbors that walk, the area has seen it and may mention that, what can we do again to get out? To see if we can get them to kind of clean up or put something more permanent than the, I think they used a little plexi outside the fence. And all, just to kind of hide some of their.
Commander Amanda, can you pull it up on this screen? Just, I mean, we can't take action on anything, but it's more like something you're talking about for director's report for us to look into?
Western? It's Elsie Gundo, Western. It's on, it would be the, the east side. And east of Western. It's the second property from the, the little shopping center. The first property from the shopping center. No, it's, it would be, it would be east of Western, but heading, was it heading east on Elsie Gundo?
Right about there.
Yep. Yeah, that, that piece of property right there. Yep.
Okay, we'll have our code enforcement take a look at it tomorrow.
Thank you. Okay, item number six, six A, first request for extension. First is going to extension time for conditional use permit seven dash twenty-one, a permit of operational warehouse facility, you know, in the general industrial M2 zone located at 1600, 1606 West 135th.
That would be correct, Chair. So for background for this property, this was previously approved by city council on April 25th, 2023. The entitlements for this project included site plan review number nine dash twenty-one, conditional use permit seven dash twenty-one, which is what you are reviewing for first extension, as well as a mitigative negative declaration for a 190,860 square foot warehouse building. And under the conditions of approval, CUP one, it was conditioned that this entitlement should be utilized within 12 months of the date of approval, which again is April 25th, 2023. On March 20th, 2024, the planning division received a request for an extension of time for that conditional use permit. On April 2nd, 2024, the planning division received a request for an extension of time for the site plan review. And for the site plan review, it has to be reviewed by the community development director. And on April 9th, the community development director Greg Sujiyuchi did approve that site plan review for the first extension to expire on October 25th, 2024. Just a little background for this project as well. Again, it was to approve and demolish all existing buildings, including the building structures, parking lots, and associated improvements to construct a new warehouse building. And the conditional use permit seven dash twenty-one was to allow or conditionally allow warehouses on that site. And then this request is a first request for up to six months. And so the applicant is requesting a six months extension from the original conditional use permit approval date, as they have stated that the extension is required to obtain approval from a remedial action plan with a regional water quality control board. This is required by the mitigation monitoring reporting program from the MND. And as a recap, these are the plans for that 190,000 square foot industrial building. And as far as the environmental assessment goes, this is going to be a categorically exempt from CEQA pursuant to section 15601B3, which exempts project where it can be seen with certain certainty that the activity in question does not have any significant effect on the environment. And since this request is simply to extend the conditional use permit for utilization up to six months, it can be seen with certainty that this will not create any environmental effects or impacts. And for staff's recommendation, we recommend that the commission grant the first six months extension of time for conditional use permit seven dash twenty-one to expire on October 25th, 2024.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this, ma'am? Okay. We're, we're not, we're just, we don't have to open and close because we're just asking for.
Even though it's not a public hearing, still take public comment if there's somebody who wants to speak on the item.
At this time, I would open the public hearing for anyone who'd like to speak on, on this item here for 1600 and 1606 West 135th.
This is the applicant, Chair.
Members of the commission, my name is Jason Hines. Can you hear me okay? I just want to let you know I'm here to answer any questions you might have. And I thank you for hearing this tonight and considering our extension. Thank you.
We have any questions for the applicant? No questions? That was simple. No questions for you. Thank you. Okay, then we'll close the public hearing. And at this time, is there a motion or is there any discussion that we want to talk about? Anything we're there? We're good there? Okay. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. The commissioner grant the first six month extension of time for conditional use permit number seven dash twenty-one to expire on October 25th, 2024.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Langley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wrightshire?
Yes.
Commissioner Sherman?
Yes.
Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
And Chair Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay. Moving, item six B, resolution PC 10 dash 24, denying the appeal of the tire house incorporated from the director's decision to revoke the approval of the site plan four dash 15 of the tire house located 1818 West Redondo Beach Boulevard, finding the actions category exempt from CEQA pursuant to the guideline section 15321.
Yes. Good evening, Chair Henderson and members of the planning commission. As stated tonight before you, staff is bringing back resolution number PC dash 24. As recall, the request for an appeal of the director's decision to revoke the site plan review for 1818 West Redondo Beach Boulevard was brought before you at the February 20th planning commission meeting earlier this year. At that time, the commission directed staff to draft a resolution to deny the appeal request, upholding the decision by the director. And at this time, the planning commission is being asked to vote on that resolution tonight, resolution number PC 10 dash 24. Included as part of your packet as well was a letter received by staff from Eduardo Santa Cruz, the architect for the, representing the applicant in regards to the status of the work that's being done on the property. So that was made part of your packet as you consider it under tonight's resolution. Again, at this time, if there's any questions by the, by the commission, staff is available for that. In the same manner, while this is not a public hearing, if there's any members wishing to speak on the site, I may ask that the commission grant, grant the public that right to speak.
And members of the commission, I would like to provide an update. Since the time that you had directed staff to prepare this resolution, I will note that the applicant has made significant progress in moving forward with making those improvements. They have paid and submitted new plans to our planning and building and safety. It's currently going through plan check review. I did a site visit today. The tires, which was a big, one of the larger issues, is now mitigated. It's solved. They do still have a wrought iron fence up, but there is plans to remove that. The applicant, the business owners are all here tonight. But staff's updated recommendation for you to consider is to continue this adoption of the resolution and direct staff to continue monitoring their progress. And therefore, that would be our new recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Well, at this time, I'll open up the public hearing, unless there's any, unless there's any questions for staff regarding this. Public comments, excuse me, public comments, I'm sorry. So at this time, the applicant, if you would like to step forward and.
There we go. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the commission, Jonathan Curtis. I saw you back in February. It's very nice to see you again. I thank you for the update that staff has prepared. I also would like to thank staff for all the work that staff has done actually with, with the applicant, with the new property, not the new property owner, the new LSE, the new business owner, to actually make the site, new site plan come, come to being. The new site plan was a lot of work in order, and had to be prepared by the architect, looked at the exactly, you know, where things should go, updated it. Because originally that site plan that you've seen, that you've considered was for two tenants. And that's how old it is, because there's only one tenant. So it needed to be updated. And actually, there's not as many changes being made now as originally contemplated in the original site plan that never took, took place type of situation. But we're here to answer any questions tonight. I would like to introduce Mr. Mu. Mr. Mu, as you know, last time was in Korea, and so unfortunately, he was not able to address this commission. And I think he would like to say a few words about everything that's occurred since he's been back from his trip and all the progress that's been made, as well as the progress that'll be made in the, in the coming near future. And he will be able to, I think, address also the timing, timing for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Chairman, respectful staff members. My name is John Mu. I'm the legal property owner of the 1818 West Redondo Beach Boulevard. I'm here to present myself. And first of all, I do apologize that this matter has not been resolved for various reasons, but that's our excuse. We just want to get to the point that I do humbly request that you grant us a time, extra time to finish this project off and let this matter be, you know, offsite from the city matter. Personally, there was a little misunderstanding from my previous architect, is that we submitted a plan to accommodate a second tenant coming in. So we submitted a site plan. And before that, that the tire business were already operational because of he, Mr. Asadori and Joe came to city. And I say, I had this property vacant for two years. I had a various tenants coming into the city trying to get a business permit, but they all been denied because parking requirement there was lacking. So I said, well, if you can go to city, talk to them, if they give you permit, then you know, you can open up the business. But somehow he was able to get a business permit. While I was trying to negotiate with the city to get a conditional permit use, I said, I was surprised they gave you permit. Regardless, so he was able to start his business. And later on, I was finalized with the city on a special use permit. And then, of course, his business grew and grew. I was going to accommodate a second tenant, but realized he has, you know, business being so well and good, he had a lot of tires. I said, Joe, I say, you better take the remainder of the building because you cannot leave the tire outside. I'm not blaming Joe for this. I mean, he was doing well. So I, in a way, I kind of forced him to take the remainder of the building to store the tires in. But then, you know, he kept growing and growing. So that was kind of out of my control how to run his business. But anyway, in a way, it came to this point that everything kind of fell, fell in and everything exploded. And I'm basically to blame. As far as improvements, you know, I should have done that earlier. But as far as operational issues, now we have a new business owner, Frank. And I've been talking to him. He's been able to discard about 2,000 used tires on site and off site. They had a lot of inventory, you know? So he's, he's really minimizing the number of inventory and tires on site. And, and Greg has been very helpful, you know, trying to instruct us and guide us how to, you know, do better operation. We're trying to be like Firestone next door if we can, you know, be, you know, tidy and clean all that. So anyway, I do apologize once again as a property owner. And this property being in the, around the seat of the intersection of the city, Gardena, I know is very important. And I also do, I also do want to see my property, you know, looks nice and beautiful for the city as well as myself. So that will be my request, humble request, that you grant us your time and your patience once more on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the applicant?
Yes, question I have is how much time?
Oh, we did submit right away hard architect, local architect and the plans and all the site plans. So right now, we're waiting for the process to get approved, approved from the planning department. So once they have a final approval, we can start all the work together.
Yeah, so they have paid and submitted plans. We have a normal 10 day turnaround for first plan check. If there's corrections needed, we give time to the architect to make those, those corrections. And then we re-review those corrected plans. They then go through a building process where they're also checked. And then the permits are evaluated, calculated. We provide that to the tenant or the applicant. They then pay for the permits. The permits are issued. Then they have to take the time to go and find their, their contractors to go ahead and start the work also. Then they go through the inspection process. So it's a lengthy process and it all depends on, you know, a lot of different variables, weather also. So I'd hate to put a hard time on it, but I think if the commission were to just direct staff to continue monitoring their progress, we could report back to the commission. And if they stop progress, we can bring back the resolution at a later time.
So would you suggest that we say a three month review of progress?
Sure, staff can bring back an update on what's occurred in the past few months.
So the question I have is the, the facility is armed, it has an alarm, correct?
I believe so.
So then, why the wrought iron fence?
Well, the fence came with the property. We acquired this property 2013. As far as we understand, the previous owner, they built a property nineteen, early 1960s, it had auto, auto repair business. So we just basically, we inherited whatever was there on site. Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I would agree. The fence was there when they acquired it. It was just never permitted. And so there's no file for a permit. It is an option that they can reinstall it, but under certain setback in development standards. And Amanda's looked over the plans and came up with a solution if they want to put back the fence. But ultimately, where it's located, it would need to be removed.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is the business intended now to be a full service business where you align? Do the alignments as well because Joe was not aligning the tires before. He was just putting tires on and I was, we were told that they would recommend where to go. And shocks, you know, whatever the car needs. So will it be a full service business or will it be just tires?
That I'm not too sure because, you know, Joe probably can answer you better. Something I wanted to speak on behalf of Mr. Frank, the new business owner. The fence will, will work with the city to take it down, but we have to address the issue of property safety. And that's something I have to work with a tenant. But he asked me to address the members here is that being a tire service business, there oftentimes tow trucks bring the cars that was the flat tires. And then the regulation is that we have to put the car inside a stall to get serviced then. But as you, as you know, commonly, the flat tires are rather, yeah, or he said, Joe said, yeah, just they only do tires. Tire is like five, 10 minutes job actually, and they're in and out. So Frank says it's not very practical. We pull the car out, you know, put the car back in for a tire exchange. Sometimes it's better for them to just fix the turn on the spot and get, move the car out of the lot. So he find it a little challenging how he will address this issue completely. Unless he said, give him some kind of shield in the back section, maybe extra open space where he can do, you know, outdoor quick service. So that's something he's concerned right now, if, if there's any solution for his concerns, not having enough service space.
But this, I think the city concern also is for the safety.
Yes, sir.
So that's a main concern.
Right.
I do understand there is not enough space to service, but they may affect the safety of the resident.
Yes, we'll, we'll work with the city and the planning department and see what the best solution for all the parties involved. Yes.
Any other questions?
No, but I'm curious, you have a, a new, a new plan that you're going, that has been presented to the city?
Yes, so we found out that we, all the records, as far as I know, city doesn't have a record. And my architect retired. I've been searching, trying to find all record. We couldn't. So we had to redraw the whole site plan from bottom up, from scratch. So that's why we submitted. And then there was, I believe there was one revision back from the planning department, and we made revisions. And that they also said, okay, we also need a separate landscape architecture drawing. So I think that was probably already submitted as far as I know. Unfortunately, my architect is out of town, so he can't be here tonight. So we submitted both plans, I believe, for the city to review for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure, like you said, this will be just tires then?
Right, just the tires.
Frank, will, this will be just tires?
Joe, John, you want to answer? Tires and brake jobs?
Tires and brakes.
Right.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other question for Mr. Mu? Well, I, I thank you for making progress with the city. I really, I really thank you for, for that, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for patience.
Well, at this time, then I'll, there's no more questions for the applicant? Okay, I'll close the public comments, discussions with us, anything? We're good?
Can you use your mics?
I do my mic, okay. I think continuing is fine. I just, I would just like to have a date in there so that we could make sure that it comes back in an appropriate time. And if rebuts the review is, see progress, then I'm, I'm good with that.
Yeah, I, I think the, 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 the three month time is, six months is, is ideal. But, you know, the three month time was to sit there to show progression that things are continuing to see. So yes, I think that, that is, is a, is a good idea and also.
Staff is proposing to bring back an update on July 16th. That would be about three months. That'd be the second meeting of July.
Okay.
Okay.
So is the motion to continue for, till July 16th, is it?
Yeah.
Until July 16th to review?
Yes.
Was that the motion?
Yes.
No motion made yet. So it's whatever you want it to be, but, but there is no motion pending on the floor yet.
Okay, so I make a motion that we extend, we, I guess, extend this until July 16th to review it again.
Honored, pardon me. Unfortunately, because of personal family issue, it's possible we delay to August. As far as the site work, I believe personally, as soon as the city approves, gives a final approval, basically it's a resurfacing the parking lot, landscaping and the trash enclosure. Pretty much all exterior works should be pretty fast, I would imagine.
We're not looking for it to be finished. We're just looking to see that it's progress.
Progress, yes, sir.
Okay, that's, that's all we're looking for.
Okay.
Yeah, I wouldn't need your presence at the July 16th meeting. We would see the progress internally, along with site visits, and we can report that back to the commission without your presence.
We'll hope to get it done before that.
So I made that motion.
Yes.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please, then.
Commissioner Langley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wrightshire?
Yes.
Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sherman? And Chair Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero with the proposal made, or motion made.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number seven, community and development directors' report.
Yes, do we have items tonight to display? So upcoming events, April nineteenth, twenty... To the, this is an old one, or, yeah, I... I, I, I actually think they, they might have postponed this carnival, and so we'll give you an update on that. And for anyone watching this video, please check our website for an update on whether this carnival will be happening, yeah. So second one is Earth Day, April twentieth, eight AM to eleven AM over at The Willows. If you haven't participated in the past, be prepared to do some work because I know my son does not want to volunteer again because he has put the hard work. And so do be prepared to do some work, bring some gloves, or they actually provide everything. But it's a good day, it's a good, good opportunity to go and maintain The Willows out there. And then the last one is Cinco de Mayo, it's on Saturday, May fourth. It's parade and festivities, and there's a parade route that starts over on New Hampshire and Gardena Boulevard, and kind of goes along Gardena Boulevard up to Normandy, and then goes north, and then ends at Mosfukai Park. So if you want to participate in the parade, let staff know, and then we'll let the recreation department know. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Item number eight, Planning and Development Environmental Commission's Report. You start with my far right?
No, no report, thank you.
Well, I don't know if this is a report or not, but where I live, we're having a lot of theft going around. Two trucks on Mariposa, somebody tried to break into recently. Somebody's following Amazon drivers early in the morning and stealing packages. Yesterday, a package of mine was stolen. Within a minute that it was delivered, by the time my daughter went downstairs to go get the package from the door, it was gone. And I have a video of it, and I have a picture of this person, and I think it's a local because later on that afternoon, we saw the same person bicycling down one hundred and sixty-eighth street to Vermont. So being that we have neighborhood watch in our neighborhood, I would like to know where can I send the picture of this person to with the police and maybe have some more patrols because one guy, his truck, they tried twice, and he's put a kill switch on it.
Well, yeah, we can get you in contact with the lieutenant for that district. So Lieutenant Rivera is the district lieutenant for District Three, and we can get you in connection with him in regards to those issues. They also meet, they have district meetings, and he provides a report of the local or the crime statistics within that quarter. So I would also suggest to, you know, to anybody in those areas, if they like to get an frequent update, to reach out to him as well in regards to that, but we'll get you in contact with him.
Thank you.
Okay, for myself, I would like to thank the city. This may get a little emotional for me, but I have a dear friend that was in Vietnam, and I told him about the wall, and he swerved out, he would never visit, but his son told me that he did come out. And he wants to thank the city for that because it's been years that he has kept that inside, and he just wanted to see his friends again, you know? And I thank the city for, for that. And other that, there's no report for me, other than my car was vandalized last. So I know what you're going through and all the other stuff. So I, the only thing I can tell you is just file a report with GPD, give them all the information, and then if they will find the person and all, they will do their best to do it. But my, my vehicle was vandalized too as well.
I also want to thank the city for the war that heals because I got to see, or just the name of a childhood friend that died over there. And I never thought that going to the war, it would hit me. But it did. And my wife, she had two friends from North Dakota that died, and it did the same thing to her. So I really appreciate that the city had the war there. Thank you.
And to add regarding the war, I mean, my wife also found her cousin from Paris, Texas when she went over there. She was, she was surprised, so. And my next, my next report is I noticed the projects on Western and Marine, I think they started, they tear down the existing structure, so they're working.
Yes, they did do some demolition work there for the building. I don't know what their progress is after that, but, you know, permits do expire, so we remind them that permits expire, so hopefully we'll see not only just a blank lot, but some construction afterwards also.
But that was the Seven Lees Tea Company, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, that was the potential tenant there, and the actual owner is a different entity that actually owns it, yeah.
I too like to thank the city for bringing the wall. Saw two classmates of mine from Gardena High that are on the wall. Having been there, to now myself, it brought back lots of memories, and it does heal. And I was really surprised that we got it twice within just a couple of years. It was really something. And what's, question I guess would have at this point is what's happening with the building on Gardena Boulevard very close to Normandy that seems to be waiting patiently for stucco or something go on to that building?
Yeah, that's, I believe, I want to say four-story buildings, we're a fourteen-unit mixed-use building, fourteen residential dwelling units, and with ground floor commercial space. It did come before the commission back in twenty seventeen, and it's under construction at this time. I'm not sure at what stage they are in construction, or if there is something holding it up. We can, staff can report back to the commission.
Also, the apartment complex on Normandy, just south of Redondo Beach Boulevard, next to the church, it, the front two units seem to be occupied now, but the back four seem to still be in some state of awaiting type of construction.
Normandy, I'm sorry, you said Redondo, it's one of the G three projects, is it the Townhome Development? What am I, like, yeah, yeah, that, that's just, just north of Mosfukai, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so yeah, that's, that's a thirty-unit Townhome Development, yes, they're under construction. Actually, I can report on that one, they called for a final for planning for, so we're, we're one of the last ones to go out there for, but they go unit by unit, so they're by building by building. So at least two of the buildings are, yeah, I believe the ones you're referring to are ready to be completed, finalized, and be occupied, so they're at the final stages, but they're continuing the other phases of the development project, and so continuing construction within the site.
Well, then, I will adjourn the meeting. It is seven forty-three.